Hello and welcome, we're back. Hard to believe it, time flies. Thanks for joining in again. The journey continues. Today, we will be reaching the climax of the book of Judith and it is quite, quite an adventure. So buckle up, hopefully you're ready. I hope and pray that you had a good week, a blessed week. I know I certainly have. This past weekend was especially fun. My, my wife got to get away and had a weekend with some of her close friends from college and just had a beautiful, renewing weekend and, and so sometimes, yeah, so there's such a blessing with the kids. You know, sometimes so much going on, so busy and so just like Chelsea being away, just being able to be like fully, hopefully more fully present to the kids. So we had, we had a lot of fun. We had a Lord of the Rings movie marathon. We went on a bike ride, went to my sister's party and just soccer games and it was just such a blessing. So it was a lot of fun, get to do some, some dad things. So it was, it was quite, quite the blessing. So anyways, let's pray and let's, let's dive on in. Thanks again for joining us. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we come before you this day and we just, you, you're so good, you're so loving, you're so true, you're so beautiful. And we just turn to you, the source, the source of all that's good, all that's true, all that's beautiful. We yearn for you, God, our heart yearns for you. Please pour out your Holy Spirit upon us in our lives. Pray for your, an abundance of your grace, of your love. We, we seek you, God, we yearn for you. In a world of noise and chaos, pray that you would be our strength, our rock, our firm foundation. Pray for, and thanksgiving for the gift of, of your word. The, the, the gift of sacred scripture, we pray that as we read and reflect and study in your word, that it would come alive and speak to us and stir our hearts and call to us to conversion. We especially thank you for the gift of the witness of Judith. And we pray that we can be inspired and challenged to, to be bold, to, to boldly love you, to boldly proclaim you, to boldly give witness to all that you are. To have the, the strength and the courage to do what's right. And so we pray for her, that we could be strengthened and challenged by our witness and that we could be inspired to be ambassadors of your love, witness of your love. So we ask these things, Jesus, in your holy name, in the recession of our blessed mama, as we pray together. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Alright, so we left off last week with this poker, if you remember the poker dance, right? They've, they've each had these cards and they're, they're trying to make the other think they're showing their full hand, but are they? What, what's being hidden, right? And they, they, they're each playing off with the other, just trying to think, acting like it's a full story, but like hiding their real thoughts. Right? Quite, quite the dance, right? So again, if you remember Judith has boldly stepped out, gone, left Israel essentially by herself, dressed to kill and walked into the hands of the enemy. Highly risky, right? And yet somehow she's made her way all the way to Holofernus and she's talked to him and she's basically said, I, I know my people are gonna sin and, and so I know we'll be destroyed. And so I've come to, to you for salvation and I, I, I will pray to my God and that way I can, I'll be able to know the hour, the moment when they sin and I'll be willing to tell you in exchange, kind of like for my freedom, for my salvation. See, I haven't done it yet, but they're about to and, and so I know it'll be destroyed, so that's why I fled, but I'm gonna give you this, this, this wisdom. And so that's kind of what the angle she's playing, right? And part of her advantage is, gosh darn it, she's a beautiful woman. And so there's the appeal and the allure that that brings. And so we, we almost finished chapter 11 and we, we got one last paragraph here. And so we're in the, we're in the midst of that, that interplay between Judith and Holofernus. So we'll pick up in chapter 11, verse 20. "Her words pleased Holofernus and all of his servants, and they marvelled at her wisdom and said, 'There is not such a woman from one end of the earth to the other, either for beauty of face or wisdom or of speech.' Holiver said to her, 'God has done well to send you before the people, to lend strength to our hands, to bring people, to bring destruction upon those who have slighted my lord. For not only beautiful in appearance, but wise in speech. If you do as you have said, your God shall be my God, and you shall live in the house of King Nebuchadnezzar and be renowned throughout the whole world.'" Okay, so interesting, does he mean this? Does he not? What's his angle? We don't know, right? Or we do know, but like, whatever, but, but the bottom line is, he's, he's saying what he thinks she wants to hear, okay, right? And he's affirming her, oh, I'm not just in love with your beauty, but your wisdom, my goodness, huh, right? If you, if this turns out, why not? Your God can be my God, heck, you'll be, you'll be renowned throughout the kingdom, okay? So he's, he's talking quite the, quite the game, right? And so you remember earlier she was kind of puffing him up and now he's kind of turning the favor, right? And they're stoking, stoking the ego. Interesting, okay? So, but yeah, so, but so far, right, it's worked, right? They're, they're, they've established some sort of relationship with some, with like, and they, they, they've kind of shown their intentions. And so we'll see what happens. How long can they, can they keep that up? Chapter 12. "Then he commanded them to bring her in where his silver dishes were kept, and ordered them to set a table for some of his own food and to serve her with his own wine. But Judith said, 'I cannot eat it lest it be an offense, for I will be provided from the things I brought with me.' Holofernus said to her, 'If your supply runs out, where can we get more like it for you? For none of your people is here with us.' Judith replied, 'As your soul lives, my lord, your servant will not rise, not use up the things I have with me before the Lord carries out by my hand what he has determined to do.' Then the servants of Holofernus brought her into the tent, and she slept until midnight. Along towards the morning watch she arose, and sent to Holofernus and said, 'Let my lord now command that your servant be permitted to go out and pray.' So Holofernus commanded his guards not to hinder her, and she remained in the camp for three days. And went out each night to the valley of Bethulia and bathed at the spring in the camp. She came out from the spring, she prayed the Lord God of Israel, to direct her way for the raising up of her people. So she returned clean, stayed in the tent until she ate her food toward evening." Okay, interesting, alright, so a couple of things. So, so one is this offering by Holofernus, right? Here's some food, here's some wine, right? This is such a gracious, generous host, right? And the, the wine part, interesting, right? How much wine might he be interested in wanting to serve her, okay? And yet, and so there's a small trap there, right? And so you have Judith's response, like, I can't offend my lord, that's why I brought my own food. We have certain rituals, certain customs and so I politely decline, because again, I've gotta find out, I gotta be, I gotta be tight with the lord to find out when they're gonna do something, so you, so right? So she, she's creating a little bit of, of autonomy, right? And the, but it, and it's reasonable, right? So she's able to eat her own food and drink her own drink, which is important, okay? And, and then also then in that second paragraph, she's provided this opportunity to go out and to pray. Okay? And she kind of helps a little bit of routine. So she's like in the camp, right? And she has Holofernus's blessing and she kind of is, does a little bit of her own thing, right? Her own food, own drink, she's allowed to go into, into, to pray, she, she bathes, okay, interesting, okay? Reading on, verse 10. "On the fourth day Holofernus held a banquet for his slaves only and did not invite any of his officers." It's all about me, right? Forget you, my little, my officers, my, tonight's about me, okay? Basically what he's saying. Verse 11. "And he said to Bagois, the eunuch, who had charge of all his personal affairs, 'Go now and persuade the Hebrew woman who is in your care to join us and eat and drink with us. For it will be disgrace if we let such a woman go without enjoying her company. If we do not embrace her, she will laugh at us.'" There is, you have, you have, you have Holofernus's, his, his ego, his, yeah. So he sends for his eunuch to go to the girl and it's like, she, 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 she wants me, is basically what he's saying, right? It'd be, she'd be offended if I didn't try to get to know her better, right? And so, we must, we must, right? So, so she's sent for, right? And so, I mean, she's playing a dangerous game. From the moment she walked out of the camp, dressed to kill, walking into the heart of enemy, a male dominated enemy, okay? That's, that's away from home, like, that's a dangerous game, okay? And so she, 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 she has, she's, she's, she had some, some thoughts on how to, to kind of navigate that and it's worked so far, but like, how, how far can she push it, right? And so, so you, you kind of get some insinuations here from Holofernus, like, day one passed, day two, day three, day four, he's like, time's up, honey, okay? So he throws this feast, servants only, none of his officers, it's about me and he wants her there. So verse 13. "So Bagois went out from the presence of Holofernus and approached her and said, 'This beautiful maidservant will please come to my lord and be honored in his presence, and drink wine and be merry with us, and become today like one of the daughters of the Assyrians, who serve in the house of Nebuchadnezzar.'" Right? So there again, right? It sounds nice, but it's, it's dropping those hints and those implications, okay? So she's invited, right? And it's important that she drink wine so she can be married and she'll get to become like one of the daughters of the Assyrians, right? I think there's kind of like an, an interesting undertone to this, especially in light of the Old Testament, in light of some of the weaknesses that Israel faced, right? All along, obviously there's exceptions, but like, one of the ongoing issues is they want to be like all the other nations, right? And there, there's this appeal and this allure to what, what, what all the other nations are doing and, and that, that appeal is timeless, right? Down through the ages, okay, and it manifests itself today with what are, what, what are all, in high school, like what are all the cool kids doing, right? What, what are they watching? What are they listening to, right? And that, that, that current, it's powerful, right? That, that want, want, the wanting to conform, right? And so here, right, it's interesting, like she's being offered the very, the very thing that Israel so often yearns, yearns for, right? She gets to be like everyone else and not just like everyone else, but everyone else in a special way, like, she's, she's the, the light of Holofernus, right? The, the number one general in charge of this army of Nebuchadnezzar, who's systematically like helping, you know, build this world empire, right? And so this is being offered to her, right? And so for, for, if you know anything about Israel and her history, like there's, there's an appeal to that, there's an allure to that, right? And so that's, it's a, that temptation, right? And, and but like, I think we, the, the reader, like getting to know Judith, like, is this of any appeal to her? No, alright, but that, but that says so much about who she is compared to some of her, her, her fellow countrymen, right? And, and that, and that, that probably has zero appeal to her, right? And so yeah, so anyways, I think again, a kind of a point for reflection for each of us is, you know, what are, what are, what are ways in which we fall victim to that trap? That angel trap, that desire to want to be like all the other, all the other nations? And, you know, and it, it appeals to us in all sorts of different ways, right? But it's, it's that, that, that yearning, that desire for, to, to, to fit in and so with, with that, what, what do we sacrifice? What do we compromise with? Whether it's, as I already said, whether it's, it's in music, the TV, our speech, the jokes we tell and laugh at, you know, like the, 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 what we, what we wear, finding identity and wealth. Well, yeah, the list is endless, right? But that, that allure, that temptation. And what's so sad about it is that it's a far cry from what God's giving us, offering us, right? The, the, it's, it's settling for the crumb when God's offering us the banquet feast of the lamb, right? He's offering us truth and beauty and goodness itself, right? And we're like, thanks, but no thanks. I really just wanna, I just wanna be like the cool kids. I just wanna fit in. I just wanna be like everyone else and God's like, but like, but that's crumbs, it's nothing, it's cheap, it's weak. Like I'm, ah, and we're like, eh, I know God, but you don't understand, I just wanna fit in and on my social gatherings. I just wanna be able to post those pictures, whatever it is, I don't know, right? But like, ah, like, but, but there's a tragedy to it and then what we, what we, what we settle and compromise for is a far cry from what God's calling us to, right? But we get, we get, we get seduced by that, by the message of the world, right? So anyway, that, it's fascinating, right? That, that line, right? "Become today like one of the daughters of the Assyrians," right? You can have what the world has, you can have what everyone else has, right? And so, I mean, how, how many characters in the Old Testament would be like, where do I sign, right? And so how would, how would Judith choose to respond? As we, yeah, does that appeal to her? Verse 14. "And Judith said, 'Who am I to refuse my lord? Surely whatever pleases him, I will do it once, and it will be a joy to me until the day of my death.'" Alright, so interesting, right? What does she say? She says, she says, who am I? I like, oh, oh, I'm, I'm no, I have nothing, he wants me, ah, I, I would be thrilled to say yes, right? Whatever pleases him, I will do it once. Thank it, say it, it's done. It'll be a joy to me to feel the ser- Holofernus. Okay, so is this what she really means? I don't think so, I hope not, we'll find out, right? But, right, is this, is this a pleasing message for, one for Bagois to hear and be able to bring that to Holofernus? Is this what Holofernus wants to hear? Yes it is, okay, right? So again, they're, they're, he drops an innuendo, she responds, she drops an innuendo, but what this is telling us though is the, the stakes are escalating, right? So it's like things are, things are coming to a head now, like, Holofernus has made his intentions? No, and Judith's like, well, yes. And so, and so that, like, once you, when you've kind of gone down that road, like, and she's gone down that road, right? But like this is, it's, it's reaching the point of no return, right? And so she's, I mean, the, the sand's trickling down the, the timer, right? She's running out of time, like tonight's the night. And so she's, she's, she's committing to that and saying that, right? And again, right, she's gotta, she's gotta say it without batting an eye, right? She smiles, bats her eyelashes, whatever, right? Verse 15. "So she got up and arrayed herself in all her woman's finery, and her maid went and spread on the ground for her before Holofernus the soft fleeces, which she had received from Bagois for, for her daily use, so she might recline on them when she ate. Then Judith came in and lay down." Right? Holofernus's heart was ravished with her and he was moved with a great desire to possess her, for he had been waiting for an opportunity to deceive her ever since the day he first saw her. "So Holofernus said to her, 'Drink now and be merry with us.' Judith said, 'I'll drink now, my lord, because my life means more to me today than all the days since I was born.' Then she took and ate and drank before him with her maid, what her maid had prepared. And Holofernus was greatly pleased with her and drank a great quantity of wine, much more than he had ever drunk in any one day since he was born." Alright, so what happens, right? Again, as I said, things are escalating, right? From the very first chapter, right? The, 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 the narrator, like, the, you know, the, the author and God, right? Together with the human author, right? But like, they, they're telling us a story, but it's a story that like, with every paragraph, with every chapter, like, the, it's, the stakes are getting higher, right? It's, it's, it's intensifying and it's getting more intense. It's like, woo, like, like, this is it, okay? And so like, Holofernus has said basically, I wanna have sex with you and she says basically, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, let's do it, okay? And so he has this feast and there she comes and so she's all done up and she's laying the fleeces before him and she arranges herself at his feet and she's there and she's looking at him, okay? Dun, 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 right? So again, this is, this is, this is the moment of no return, right? What, what's she gonna do? How is she gonna save the day? But like, whatever she intends, like, this, this, this is it. There, there's a couple, there's a couple lines in here, right? Especially verse 16, like, it almost makes you, like, your, your blood run cold, like it, there's something about it, like, like, like it hits you, right? The, the, because again, Holofernus up to this point, like, when, when it comes to her, oh, he's been sweet and romantic and up in air and how can I serve you? And your God be my God, and you're beautiful and you've got wisdom and, oh, right? But it's all been a lie, right? He's been playing that poker hand, right? And, and so here we come to know what's going on in, in interiorly, in his mind and in his heart, right? There, there, there's a couple of things that stand out, right? The line, "He was moved with great desire to possess her." Right? It's such evil, right? He wanted to possess her, right? John Paul 2 will talk about how the, the only appropriate human response to another person is love. The only appropriate response to another human being is love. And like that, oh, that's so true, like, that hits deep, right? And so the, 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 um, because we're humans, right? And, and what, what's, and like, the difference between us as humans and an object, is an object is you, you use for your own pleasure. And when it no longer seeks to be useful, you discard it, right? But, but, but humans should never be treated as objects. And yet, like, that's precisely what Holofernus is doing here, right? He wants to possess her, right? He, he, he sees her as nothing more than an object, an object to be used, right? And so this is, this is lust, right? And again, the devil's sneaky and he's evil and he's wily, right? He loves to, to put lipstick and, 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 and makeup on, on lust and like make it look pretty and like so forth and so on. But like, the heart of lust is this, like, I, it's, you do not care about the other person, you don't desire their good, right? You, you do not love them, right? It's a game that we play so that I can get pleasure from you. I'll say that I love you, but what I mean by I love you is I love what you, I love what you can give me. And I'll say what it takes so that I can get from you, because I want to possess you, alright? And so I might say some nice things, I might do some nice things, but it's a charade, right? It's, it's a lie. All I care about is the pleasure that you can give me. So I don't love you, I love what you can do for me. And so as long as that's the basis of my relationship, right? You're good to me as long as you give me pleasure, but when you cease doing that, or I find another pleasure I like more, guess what, honey? Bye-bye, right? And that's, that's what's, it's evil and it's sick and it's twisted, right? And so you, you see that Holofernus has become a slave to his desires, okay? And then, and that, I think that's one of the powerful messages that we have as Catholics and Christians is that, as human beings, like, do we have desires? For sure, but we live in, we live, we live after the fall, right? And so our desires at times, we are disordered, okay? And, and so the, the great, one of the great lies is the devil sells us in this generation of ours is that, that, that like our desires are our highest good, we're created for our desires. And so to be happy means saying yes to my every desire. How can, like, my, my desires are revealed, my truest self, my truest identity, right? Who am I to tell my desires no, right? And all that does is it makes me a slave to my desires, right? Because how, how can I ever tell my desire no? And, and so whatever, and so like, I'm, 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 I've become a slave to my desires. And so there, there's a small thing that that lie is, is, is covering up. The fact that I've been given the intellect, right? That I've been given a brain that, that can come to know what's true, right? And so that, that also should come into play when it comes to my relationship with my desires, right? And so the gift of our intellect, the gift of our brain is we come to know the truth, okay? And that's powerful. And so I come to know the truth and I have my desires and so I say, okay, how did these, how did these meet up? And so there's, there's times in my life when my desires affirm what I know to be true. Well, great, thank you desires, let's do it, like, let's encourage those. But there's times, okay, in which my desires and what is true don't line up. And then what am I called to do? Well, we're called to live in truth. We've been given an intellect for reasons, probably what separates us from the animals. Right? I'm not just, I don't just act on my instinct, right? I can know the truth and I can, I can choose the truth, I can choose the, choose the good. That's powerful, okay? And so we have a gift, right? Our desires are great, but, but they're fickle, right? Sometimes our, our desires are wild, sometimes, right? And, and so it's a call to live in truth and to, and to, and to, and the, the beautiful thing, right? Is that the, the more you choose the truth and you order your desires to the truth, your desire is like, oh, okay, and they, they, they like, they, they come along, right? Versus, versus, the more we become a slave to our desires, we're a slave to that, that fickle nature that's always changing and it leaves us dissatisfied, restless and divorced from truth and our God is a god of truth, right? An analogy I love using with my sophomores, right, and talking about marriage is like, did, did I, when I married Chelsea, July 14th, 2007, I swear that I would feel in love with her the rest of my life. And like, I can't tell you how often the kids are like, yes, that's what you said. And I'm like, no, no, I didn't. And they're like, what? I'm like, am I, am I a fillings in manufacturing? Can I just ma, do I just manufacture my feelings, right? I mean, if, if that's true, sweet, then why, why don't we always choose to be happy and joyful? Gotcha, we don't, you know? And so like, if I swore that I would feel in love with Chelsea, I'd be swearing a lot because I can't control my feelings. I mean, I can influence them and like, but there's, there's, there's times when my, my feelings are kind of all over the map, right? And like, yeah, sprinkling a little Corona COVID virus, sprinkling some politics, like, feeling can go everywhere, right? And so here's the distinction, right? I never, I did not swear that I would feel in love with Chelsea, because if I, if I did that, I'd be swearing a lot. I swear that I would choose to love her, okay? And, and the difference is that I've got free will and I can control that, I can control that. I, I choose to love her, whereas my feelings, I have less control over those, right? And so my alarm clock goes up, I stretch and wake up, right? Like, imagine like you had like a emotions gauge radar. I'm literally here, how much do I feel in love with Chelsea today? Oh no, it says 30%. Sorry Chelsea, today you're only getting 30% of my love. Not my fault, it's just what, it's what the desire said. And I have to be true to my desires, it's the truest, deepest part of me. Right? Different day, wake up, is she here? Oh, 86%, lucky you Chelsea, you're gonna have a good day. I feel in love with you today, so it's gonna be a good day. That's terrible, right? That's awful, right? But I think, ah, it helps to unmask like the, the stupid lie that like our desires are our God. And like, the only way we can be happy is to be a slave to our desires. False, right? Not true, a lie, right? And so instead, we, 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 we order our desires, which are a gift, right? But we have to order them to what's true. We make, we make the act of the will to choose the good, to choose what's true, right? And so again, using that analogy, wake up, you're right? Okay, turns out July 14th, 2007, I swore that I'd love Chelsea till either of us take our dying breath. Let's see here, I'm alive, she's alive. Well, hello, I'm loving you today, 100%, why? Because that's what I swore, right? And so anyways, I guess we talked a lot about that, but like, our desires are a gift and a blessing, but we're called to order them to what's true, right? Instead, the devil says, no, like disregard your intellect and, 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 and inflame your desires and pursue those, right? And that's what's gonna make you happy. And it gives us these flashes of pleasure, these flashes of instant gratification, but it leaves us empty and yearning and wanting more and restless, right? And so that, that line is so powerful, right? He allowed his desires to dictate, you know, his intellect and his will, right? And so he, and he chose to be a slave to his desires, right? He, he was possessed, yeah, he had this, this great desire to possess her, which is so evil, right? The only appropriate response to another human being is love, right? But no, right? He wants to possess her. But no, right? He wants to possess her. That's what lust offers, right? To possess her. And what, what's it, and that, that, and the follow, the follow-up, right? We've been waiting for a moment to deceive her ever since the day first saw her, right? The whole thing's been an act, it's been a lie, it's been a charade, right? He's willing to say and do what it takes so he can get what he wants from her, right? That's the evil of lust, right? And that's what's being, um, that's what's, was, was being, being offered. Um, so rampantly today to, to our generation. And it's, 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 it's an easy, it's an evil deadly poison that it's killing us. Um, and so it's, it's this, um, it's this opportunity just to, 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 uh, to indulge in our desires. Right? And to, to, to divorce the, the gift of, of, of love and sex from the object, from the person, from love. And, and reduce it merely to what can I get from it, right? To reduce it to mere pleasure. Which is, which, which is, is a cheapening of the gift, of the beauty of the total gift of self to your beloved, like. Which is, ah, so much less, right? But, 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 wha- wha- what breaks my heart and the evil that it is is that, that we're, we're. Before, before men and women are even given a fighting chance to pursue love. We're like, we're, 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 um. It's like, it's like, it's like, it's like the, like the kid that's been given, been given drugs, addictive drugs bef- before, you know, before the age of reason. Like they're, they're not given a fighting chance. Like that's what we're doing with the youth of today. We're like, here, here you go, here's a phone, here's unlimited access to porn, right? With, with, with no boundaries, with no, no oversight, right? And so, and so we're, we're, and we're flooding them with this, with, 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 with pornography, right? And, and with that, like, what is that a training ground to do? It's a training ground for love? No, it's, it's just a training ground for lust. Right? We're, in which we're, we, we're, we're training ourselves to reduce the human person, right, to this, this image. It's an image on the screen. So you're, they're, 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 they're an object. And then what do I do with this object? Well, I, I possess, I, 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 I possess it, like I, 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 um. I, I, you're, 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 you're an object for my desires. And so I, I use you and then when I'm, when I'm done using you, I discard you. I move on, next image, next image, next image, right? So like, there's this evil scourge, um, that, that, that's being lived out before our eyes. In which we're giving the youth of our generation unfiltered access to high definition pornography. From the comforts of their own bedroom, their own, their own room. And, and with little to no oversight, little to no, uh, parameters. And we're, 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 that, 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 that drip, 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 drip. And, and, and we're, we're enslaving our, our youth to, to, to. To, to that, to, to their desires, to reducing the human body to an object and so that we can possess it. And, 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 and we're, we're, we're breeding, we're creating the, the generation of hollow furnaces. Who will say and do what it takes so they can get what they want, so they can get, so that they can, um, possess the other person. Right? And, and, and that comes with evil consequences and evil ramifications. Right? And so it breaks my heart. And so like, like we, like we, we have to, we have to rise up. And, and, and to know the truth so we can choose the truth. We're made for more, we're made for love. Only appropriate response to another human person is love. And lust and porn kills it and destroys it. And I love, uh, for those of you that have been following along since we started this study back in Tobit. I, I, I love the, the relationship here with, with Tobit, right? Because you, you had, you had a very different love, love, lo- love situation, right? Um, in which, right, um, in which, um, you know, they, they, they. They, he, they, they, they rise from bed, they pray, the Lord grant us mercy and safety, right? This is from Tobit, chapter eight, verse seven, and this is Tobit praying with, with Sarah saying, and now, oh Lord. I'm taking, I'm not taking the sister mine because of lust, but with sincerity. Grant them a fine mercy and grow old together with her, right? Tobit, sorry, Tobias was willing to play his life on the line, right, to marry her. Very different from being, from selfish, from possessing, right? So he's, that's, that's sacrificial, that's dying stuff, the gift of self, right? And, 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 and he's not taking her for lust, right? Uh, but with, in truth and sincerity, right? Um, and, and kind of the, the, the evidence of that is that, is that literal laying down of life for her, right? And so for here, Hallifernus in, in, in truth, it offers her nothing, but wants to take everything, right? Um, I love you in a sense, I love what you do for me. I'm in love with how you please me, right? That's evil, that's lust, right? But that's because we, 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 we're, we're, we're training ourselves with, with, with pornography among other things. We're, that, that, that bleeds into our relationships. And so you see, you, you see these, these, these toxic relationships. Um, with, with their devastating effects and consequences, but we're made for more. Talked a lot there, but like, uh, like it's, it speaks to me deeply, right? We, 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 the devil's like peddling these crumbs and he's putting lipstick on it and making it look so appealing and flashing. And God's offering us something far greater, far deeper and far richer. Right? May we, may we, maybe not be deceived by lust. Maybe not fall into the trap of that, of that being a slave to our desires. And maybe we never seek to possess another human person, but maybe we may rise above, maybe we become epic lovers. Desiring, willing the good of the other, ordering our desires to what's true, knowing the truth. And then making that conscious, deliberate, consistent act of the will to choose it. Okay, so what happens? So notice, Hallifernus is pumped, he's stoked, he's like, yeah. Gonna get to hang out with Judith tonight, and so he's pounding the booze, okay? In fact, he drinks so much, he drank more that night than he'd ever drunk before. And again, I don't know Hallifernus quite that well, but it does, it doesn't, it's not hard for me to imagine that this boy's. Had some drinks in his lifetime, right? Uh, especially imagine after like coming back from battle and just like celebrating and letting, letting it run wild. Um, and so anyways, whatever, but whatever reason this particular night, right? He like more than ever, okay? Why? Cause he's, he, he's pumped, he's stoked, his desires are inflamed and he's like, yes, I'm gonna get to possess her. Right? This, this is it. And so he consumes these copious amounts of alcohol. Dun dun, dun dun. So thanks, Judith has, as we said, backed herself in a corner, so to speak. Um, and so this is not, not good, right? So what the heck does she have planned? How is she gonna save the day? What's gonna happen to her? This is intense, chapter thirteen, verse one. When evening came, his slaves quickly withdrew and Bagois closed the tent from outside and shut out the attendance from his master's presence. And they went to bed, for they were all, were weary because the banquet had lasted long. So Judith was left alone in the tent with Hallifernus, stretched out on his bed, for he was overcome with wine. Alright, so the evening's coming to a close, people are leaving, right? And, and so you'll notice, this isn't the first. First time this has happened, right? And so Bagois knows what's gonna happen next. And so he's, you know, getting things in order, closing the tent. Right? Make sure the candles, music, okay? And he exits, right? And so now, it's just Judith and Hallifernus alone in the tent. But, right, what's happened to our dear friend Hallifernus? In his zeal and excitement, he's thrown back to maybe a few too many. And so currently he's stretched out on the bed, overcome with wine. Verse three. Now Judith had told her maid to stand outside the bed, the bedchamber and await for her to come out, as she did every day. For she said she would be going out for her prayers. And she had said the same thing to Bagois. So everyone went out and no one, either small or great, was left in the bedchamber. Then Judith, standing beside his bed, said in her heart. Oh Lord God of all might, look in this hour upon the work of my hands for the exaltation of Jerusalem. For now is the time to help your inheritance and to carry out my undertaking for the destruction of the enemies who've risen up against us. She went up to the post at the end of the bed, above Hallifernus's head, and took down his sword that hung there. She came close to his bed and took hold of the hair of his head and said. Give me strength this day, oh Lord God of Israel. And she struck his neck twice with all her might and severed his head from his body. Then she tumbled his bed, body off the bed, pulled down the canopy from the post. And after a moment, she went out and gave Hallifernus's head to her maid, who placed it in her food bag. So, alright, apparently, in, in some form or fashion, this was Judith's plan. And woo, she, she threaded that needle, okay? So there, so there's Hallifernus passed out, right? He's so pumped and stoked, right? He consumes so much alcohol, he's inebriated, okay? So he's lay, he laying there, she's left alone, right? And so she prays to God, dear God, give me strength. She goes, she takes his sword and then chops. Off his head, severs it from his body. Oh man, that is crazy, okay? So, okay, so she, she kills Hallifernus, right? She, she gave him a night to remember, um, and, uh, yes. So a couple things, and then we'll move on. So, so one, obviously, this, this epically heroic choice, right? She, 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 she plays herself in the, in the, the. That, that, that extent of, of, of vulnerability and weakness, right? And yet, and then, and then uses that moment to, to strike the head of the enemy, right? So epic, so good, um. There's, there, there's a sense here in which, in which Judith, um, is a, 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 a provisional, a type of fulfillment. Of an ancient prophecy of Genesis, as well as a foreshadowing of Our Lady, of Mama Mary. So, let's take a look at that, okay? So, um, rewinding all the back to Genesis, Genesis, chapter three, you have the fall of Adam and Eve, okay? Um, and then you have all their poor choices, their choice to walk by the tree, their choice to dialogue with the serpent. Their choice to not pray, they choose to take in the eat, they become naked, they don't apologize, they don't run to God and beg for mercy, they're running high. God says, why are you hiding? I'm beating from the tree. Adam says, not my fault, you gave me this lousy woman. And Eve's like, the serpent. And, and so like, nothing to work with, bad, the fall, right? We know it, okay? And so you then, right, the serpent's punishment, okay? And then God turns to Adam and Eve, and this is when you expect like their consequence, their punishment. But you, instead you get Genesis three fifteen, right? This epically wild plot twist. Before Adam and Eve ever received any consequence from God's mouth, right, and, and, and any punishment from his mouth. Right? Other than the immediate natural consequence, right, earlier, right? But, but, but it's, but before God does, does any of that. And even though they given him nothing to work with, no apology, God gives him a prophecy of hope, of redemption. He says, I'll put enmity between the serpent and the woman. Enmity, what does that mean? Hatred. Right? I kill you, right? They, they're, they're mortal enemies, they're, they're, and they're each seeking to destroy the other. The seed of, of the serpent will, the serpent will, will move towards the woman, try to strike and destroy, but just bruise her heel. However, the woman in the end, the, the seed of woman will crush the head of Satan. And so here in Judith, the book of Jude, chapter thirteen, here you have Judith, a seed of the woman, a seed of Eve. Right? In which she crushes the head of the enemy. And so, uh, obviously, the Hallifernus isn't literally Satan himself, but he's, he's a bad dude. He's one bad dude, right? And so she, she destroys, she takes down the head, right? So it's a, the type of, of, of that, of the fulfillment of that prophecy. And it's a foreshadowing of our lady, right? She who is the great demon Satan head crusher, like that's Our Lady, right? Her yes to the angel Gable, which brings about the incarnation, a yes that takes her to the foot of the cross, right? Um, that, 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 that brings about the crushing of the serpent. Uh, and so just, yeah, and, and, and this, this instance, like, just a, a, a reminder of, of that prophecy. As well as a, a, a yearning of Our Lady. Uh, and so as epic as Judith is, right, Our Lady will overshadow her. Yeah, what else? Uh, also, I guess just briefly to mention this, but like, there's a problem when we get drunk. We, we have less control over whatever happens next, right? In Hallifernus's case, like, the great military leader of his generation who's been conquering the world, right? Allows himself to be beheaded by this woman, right? Like, like, but, but the fruit, how did that happen, right? He chose to get drunk, right? And that, that made himself that much vulnerable to attack. And so again, I mean, it's, I think something that we all know, but the, 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 we need that reminder, right? That, um, of, the, um, the, the, the problem, part of the problem with getting drunk is that what happens? It lowers my intellect. We talked about that earlier. We need our intellect, especially when in our battle of our desires. Right? And so what happens when we, we get drunk? What, my intellect, is my intellect in tip-top shape to help direct my desires to the truth? Not so much, no. Instead, our desire is like, woo! There's no truth, all we want to do, I get to be king, ha ha! Right? So, uh, the, 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 the problem with getting drunk, alright, and again, there's ten, we, we could talk forever about it, like. Um, but, but, but again, a reminder, right? When we choose to drink in excess, when we choose to get drunk, right? We, 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 we make ourselves vulnerable, because we, we reduce our reasoning capacity, right? And, 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 and a lot of times that's what's been needed to help order our desires. And when we lower that, when we lose that, it allows our desires to run rampant. Uh, and that's, that's not good, okay? Um, and to, in this moment, to Hallifernus's death. Okay, so she's, she's destroyed the head of the enemy. Um, she's placed his head, she didn't, so she didn't leave his body there. She places her head in her food bag. And she goes to leave, interesting, right? So there, there's, there's more to her plan. Let's find out. And like, also, how, like, okay, so that, that's awesome, but like, will she be able to escape, right? She's in the heart of the enemy, he's now headless, you know, will she be able to make a getaway? Then the two of them went out together as they were accustomed to go for prayer. And they passed through the camp and circled around the valley and went up to the mountain to Bethulia and came to the gates. Judith called out from afar to the watchmen of the gates, open, open the gate. God, our God is still with us to show his power in Israel and his strength against our enemies, even as he has done this day. So, she, not only she killed Hallifernus, but she takes his head and brings it all the way back to the Israelites. Right? Without getting caught, right? That's impressive. And how did she do that? She did that because, rewinding the story, right? She made that habit of one, having her own food bag, going out to pray, right? And so seeing her alone, seeing her with her food bag, no big deal. Notice, she went out at night to pray, to take the bath, right? And so, so this was, this was no big deal. So there she is, arises from his chamber with his head in her food basket and walks straight past the enemy. Ah, brilliant! Alright, so she returns saving song to Israel and they now have Hallifernus's head. So, what will happen the next day when they wake up? Well, will Israel be saved? Will they still be able to overcome a vastly superior army? What happens to Judith? Find out more next week. We're out of time for today. Let's close in prayer, in the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Well, God, we give you thanks for the gift of Judith, her witness, her strength. Um, we pray that we could be encouraged by her boldness and her zeal. And in particular, as we reflected on the gift of love and the cheap counterfeit of lust, we pray in a special way, Lord God. For each and every one of us to become greater lovers, to choose to love. We pray that we, um, that all of us could, could, um, put to death, um, our lustful desires, that we could, um, that we could overcome it. That we could seek healing. That we could seek healing and forgiveness and sacrament, sacrament of reconciliation, we could rise above. We pray, Lord God, that we could be, um, that we could be hopeful, um. Gifts, ambassadors, evangelists to others who who suffer from the evils of lust. Um, and and all its evil impact, um, especially those in which it's it's destroying their marriage, it's destroying their family. Uh, we pray, Lord God, that we could rise, um, and we could live in truth, we could order our desires to the good, that we could choose to love. Why? Because you made each of us, we're made in the image lightness of God, and we are good. And the only proper response to another human person is love. Give us the grace and strength through this, in your holy name, as we pray together. All glory be to the Father, to the Son, to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, a world without him. Amen, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. God bless, and see you next week.